In our meeting of the Board of Commissioners, meeting for May 21st, Tuesday, 2024. And I would like to take a moment just to ask you to silence your cell phones if they're on. And I, if there was a signup sheet for public comment, I didn't receive any signups. So if there's someone online that would like to speak, please note it in the chat. We will, when we do a round of introductions, we include people in the audience. So I will start with April Holland over here when we get going at that point in the agenda. And then if you are presenting today, when you come up to the table, you need to press the button to turn the microphone on and it will shine red at the top. It's a little counterintuitive. And you also have to place the microphone fairly close to your mouth because otherwise it doesn't work very well. So, thank you very much. With that, we will go into our board meeting. And I'm Zan Ojero, the board chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Vance Gruney, County Council.
Rachel McInney, County Commissioner.
I'm Alex. County Administrator. I'm promoting myself.
Hi, April Holland.
Dana Sanz, Behavioral Health Director.
Ashley Talamontes, Media and Global Program Manager.
Tristan Young from Jackson Street Youth Services.
Elizabeth Hazelwood, Pathfinder Clubhouse.
Debbie Sessions, Interim CFO.
Shannon Seidman, Sign House and Wyre Rule Project for Native Product Markets.
Salas Abiki, Health and Community Coordinator with Health.
Haley Olson, Communications Coordinator for Health.
Gary Stockhoff, Public Works.
Recruiters, County Administrator.
Emily Neophis, Pathfinder Clubhouse.
Jen Urie, Pathfinder Clubhouse.
Earl Stamos, Pathfinder Clubhouse.
Okay, we have a day to staff through the board.
We're proud to be in County Public Information, John Wyre, Work Commission.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Thank you all. And is there anyone online that would like to introduce themselves? Okay. With that, I'm going to take.
Hey, I'm sitting here online and it says waiting for hosts to start the meeting and waiting to be admitted. So I think we might have two different links, just FYI. So I will get off of this and go to the link on the website. Hopefully that will work.
Okay. With that, I am going to take the chair's prerogative and just note that today is election day across Oregon for primary elections. So if you haven't had a chance to vote, please take the opportunity. We typically have one of the highest rates of voter participation in the state. It's my self-interest to see that we continue that. Okay, but with that, we're going to move into a review and approval of the agenda. And I do not know of any changes to the agenda. The other thing I would like to note is that unfortunately, just last week, the former Commissioner Jay Dixon passed away. So I do want to take a moment to acknowledge his passing and to thank him and his wife, Pat Dixon, for all of the time that they committed to Benton County, to service of the county. And thank you, Commissioner Malone, for the reminder. We'll move now into proclamations. And the first proclamation is Mental Health Awareness Month in Benton County, with Elizabeth Hazelwood, Pathfinder Clubhouse, and Tristan Young from Jackson Street Youth Services. Oh, and Ashley Talamontes from Benton County Behavioral Health. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning and thank you all for joining us as we spotlight May as Mental Health Awareness Month across our nation, our country, and within our communities. We are joined by two representatives from community organizations who support this work in Benton County and have made lifelong impacts on those they serve. First, Elizabeth Hazelwood will share the Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. Elizabeth is the Executive Director of Pathfinder Clubhouse, a nonprofit organization in Corvallis which helps adults with mental illness improve their lives through meaningful work. The Clubhouse empowers individuals with mental illness to help themselves by providing services and support in employment, education, socialization, housing, and wellness, and life skills. Pathfinders was recently awarded the 2024 Nonprofit of the Year by the Corvallis Chamber of Commerce. Pathfinders Clubhouse and Behavioral Health, Benton County Behavioral Health, share many clients, many members, I should say. And I can personally say that the passion the Pathfinders brings to the work truly assists the community and those we serve. It has been incredible to see the growth of those who participate in their programming. After the proclamation, Tristan Young, Mental Health Therapist for Jackson Street Youth Services. You're the mental health therapist, okay. I thought you were, we'll talk about later. Since 1999, Jackson Street has been supporting youth through outreach, 24-hour, 24, 24/7 shelters, and supportive next steps in the continuum of service that's designed to prevent homelessness. This includes building skills for healthy relationships, problem solving, and resiliency work that collaborative, that works collaboratively with youth to empower them. Tristan is also an active member of the Benton County Youth Suicide Prevention Coalition, which brings together multiple organizations in our area to address concerns around youth suicide, from prevention to postvention. The Coalition will be hosting a positive mental health event on the 25th with Tristan will speak more about. Now I'd like to hand things over to Elizabeth to read the Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation.
Thank you, Ashley. May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. This year's theme is Where to Start: Mental Health in a Changing World. Mental health is an essential part of overall well-being, impacting individuals, families, and communities across Benton County. One in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in their lives that can impact their mental health. Despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking help, especially communities that have been historically marginalized, like Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and other communities of color. Early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. The world is constantly changing, and it can be overwhelming to deal with everything going on. Relationships and the pressure of work and school can impact mental well-being, but also politics, climate change, the economy, and other factors have an impact. While society is getting more comfortable discussing mental health, it can still be hard to know where to start when it comes to taking care of your own well-being. This year, Benton County Health Department is sharing new resources to help people navigate our changing world, build their coping toolbox, and advocate for mental health. We encourage all community members of Benton County to learn more and share with others about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources, to challenge stigma by speaking respectfully and inclusively about mental health. Seek help if they are struggling with their mental health and encourage others to do the same. Support organizations that provide mental health services and advocacy, and create a self-in supportive, a safe and supportive environment for open conversations about mental health. Together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental health and well-being, and seek help when needed. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that May 2024 is Mental Health Awareness Month in Benton County.
Hello, my name is Tristan Young. I work as a mental health therapist for Jackson Street Youth Services. Through my position, I get to help youth and risk youth experience the benefits of mental health services and to see how coping skills make a difference in their life. The Benton County Youth Suicide Coalition brings together organizations from around the community, including community-based organizations, school districts, parents, and other invested partners in youth well-being. Our coalition received a grant from Zero Suicide Coalition through the Oregon Health Authority to promote suicide prevention and mental health in our community. And we have been planning a free event, free community event for May 25th in Corvallis, at the Corvallis Community Center from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Our event is called Minds in Motion, a positive mental health event for Benton County youth and their communities. The event will feature parenting advice panel, a resource fair, bilingual yoga, therapy dogs, food trucks, and more. We hope, we hope that you will welcome, you will feel welcome to join us in this effort as we raise awareness around the importance of positive mental health for youth and families.
Thank you. I would accept a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'll move proclaiming May 2024 Mental Health Awareness Month in Benton County. Proclamation E 2024 Day 011.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and I really appreciate the thoughtful approach to Mental Health Awareness Month. I've seen lots and lots of postings and social media and newspaper articles and letters, and I think that's great. So thank you very much for all you do. Next up is item 3.2, proclaiming May 19th to May 25th as Public Works Week in Benton County. Proclamation P 2024-012, Gary Stockhoff, Director of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners and Vance. Love you, buddy. Oh, we already had our chat this morning. About your incident. So, anyway, onward. Before the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, the matter proclaiming May 19th to 25th, 2024, as Public Works Week in Benton County. Public Works infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of Benton County. Such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who plan, build, operate, and maintain transportation systems, land records, water supply, and sewage systems, motor pool, and public buildings and structures countywide. These professionals represent our local unit of government. It is in the public, it is in the public interest for residents and civic leaders of Benton County to gain knowledge and maintain a progressive interest in public works programs in the community. Your 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. The theme for this year is advancing quality of life for all. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that May 19th to May 25th, 2024, is Public Works Week in Benton County. And everyone is encouraged to learn more about the vital importance of public works, the dedicated public works employees, and to celebrate their efforts. And I just want to take a minute to also just thank you for your support. I think we can all probably acknowledge right now there's a lot of public works going on, from water sewer upgrades to the courthouse and the EOC and everything. But sometimes it's the little things that I think stand out. And I want to just bring to light something that I think you've seen here, but also at Avery and a couple other places. But Paul Wallinger and his crew came up with a very cost-effective, old-school way of painting the lines in the parking lot. And this is something that paint costs have gone through the roof. I mean, it's expensive, but we know that these parking lots have become a little bit of a challenge because the lines have disappeared. And literally, Old School found a machine, put a can in, and it paints it. I think what he's done so far, he's done for about $500. And it's a little thing, but I know for me, it helps me figure out where to park at Avery. It's, it was a mystery sometimes where the lines were at. So I just wanted to point out, it's those little things that I think make a difference. And we appreciate your support and all of that and everything that's gone on. And there's a lot still to happen as we continue down the path of getting the buildings delivered and projects that we know are upcoming for bridges and roads and all that. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you hopefully on Thursday at noon for the barbecue out at Avery. So, thank you.
I saw, I saw them out there while I saw them over at Sunset Building in the evening after we'd all left. You know, literally the two of them with the machine and I went, wow, that's dedication.
Yeah, and it's worked marvelously. I mean, it just, Paul thinks that he can do the entire, every parking lot that we have for about $2,000 all total. You know, if it lasts a year or two, that's great. That's really a wise use of funds. And I still, you probably should have taken a picture so I could see.
I was driving, so I didn't, but yeah, I should have pulled over and bothered him or something.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept proclamation?
I'd love to move proclaiming May 19th to May 25th, 2024, as Public Works Week in Benton County. Proclamation 2024 Day 012.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Keep it up, Gary.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Moving on into our work session, the first item of business in that section of the agenda is our monthly public health update with April Holland.
Come as often as you'd like. Good morning, Commissioners, Vance, Rachel. The topic for today's public health update is pertussis. I want to give acknowledgement and thanks to Gerald Dyer, our Public Health Communical Disease Program Manager, as well as Tulane County, who provided a lot of the talking points through their recent press releases and interviews. So pertussis is commonly called whooping cough. It's a highly contagious respiratory tract infection caused by a bacteria called Bordetella pertussis. Typically, pertussis has a cyclical pattern of higher cases and outbreaks every about three to five years. While we have not yet seen increases in Benton County, it's circulating widely now. And we want to ensure that folks are aware and know how to best protect themselves and their loved ones, particularly, particularly those at highest risk. So pertussis, as a respiratory illness, spreads through the air. When infected, people cough or sneeze. It's so contagious that in an unvaccinated population, one case can result in up to 16 additional cases. Pertussis usually starts pretty innocuously with mild upper respiratory symptoms that can look a lot like seasonal allergies or a cold, or maybe the flu. As they progress, symptoms may also usually include prolonged coughing fits, often accompanied by a distinctive whoop sound during inhalation, sometimes gagging or vomiting while coughing, and exhaustion, exhausting coughing. Complications, if they're left untreated, especially in infants, can be severe and include pneumonia, dehydration, seizures, and in rare cases, death. Our neighbors to the south in Lane County have recently declared a community-wide pertussis outbreak due to a surge in cases surpassing typical expectations. While some of the cases in Lane County are linked, there are also many sporadic cases which indicates community spread. So far in 2024 across the state, there have been 100 cases of pertussis reported. And at this time last year, that number was 17. So this is clearly one of those years of higher circulation. Babies younger than one year of age are at greatest risk for getting whooping cough and for having severe complications from pertussis. Additional vulnerable populations include pregnant people, young children, and people with underlying health conditions. As I said before, as we're not experiencing an outbreak or increases in cases in Benton County yet, to help prevent widespread transmission, we'd like people to ensure that they're up to date with pertussis vaccinations, that they practice good respiratory hygiene, and that they're tested at the earlier signs of symptoms, especially for pregnant people and those in contact with young children. So the pertussis vaccine is packaged in combination with diphtheria and tetanus vaccinations. It's either called DTAP or T-DAP, depending on your age. Babies and kids under seven should have a series of vaccination called DTAP. And adolescents around age 11 to 12 receive a single dose of the T-DAP vaccine. Importantly, pregnant people should receive a T-DAP during the third trimester of pregnancy to provide vital protection for themselves and their infants. A CDC study shows that T-DAP vaccination during the third trimester of pregnancy prevents 78% of pertussis cases in infants younger than two months of age. Family members, visitors, and carers of new infants can help provide a ring of protection around a baby by receiving a T-DAP vaccine. Pertussis vaccine is available through primary care providers and at local pharmacies. And I just can't help but say that you may hear about imperfect vaccines and waning immunity. Before vaccine for pertussis became widely available in the 1940s, there were about 200,000 cases of pertussis per year and approximately 9,000 deaths annually among children. Now, we may receive cases across the country of 40,000 to 50,000 cases and deaths in the double digits, actually around 20, thanks to, thanks to vaccination. Those, those numbers have decreased considerably. And, and, and next I would just want to provide an overview of those good respiratory habits that can help prevent transmission of pertussis, as well as many other respiratory diseases. well as many other respiratory illnesses. People should cover their nose and mouth with a tissue when coughing or sneezing. Throw away used tissues right away. And use their upper, their sleeve or upper, their elbow if they don't have a tissue. And don't cough into your hands. Please wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. And use alcohol-based hand sanitizers if those aren't available. In the case of a pertussis diagnosis, it is, as I said earlier, it's a bacterial infection. So antibiotics are warranted in many cases. It's important to take those as prescribed and isolate from others in the community until you're no longer infectious. Individuals can transmit the bacteria for up to three weeks after the coughing fits begin. And looping back to the importance of vaccination, when there is an outbreak, unvaccinated and exposed individuals may be excluded from work or school to prevent further transmission. So just a PSA on public service announcement on pertussis. We don't know yet if we will see increased cases here, but it's not fun to deal with a little one with pertussis. And it's, it's dangerous in little ones. So we want to make sure that, that folks know that pregnant people and young children and those taking care of them should get those vaccinations and to be aware of the symptoms and seek testing, especially if, if you're caring for one of those vulnerable populations.
Well, I would like to make a couple of comments. Thank you for bringing awareness to this issue. When I had babies, that was the number one thing that I was afraid of. And if you don't think that whooping cough is serious, I would invite you to Google children experiencing whooping cough, and it will break your heart. It's very serious. And adults can get it too. I had a friend in my, when we were in our twenties, get it. And she's 40 years old today and still has lingering symptoms. So, serious.
Is there a seasonal factor? I mean, it seems like we're kind of out of, close to out of flu and cold season.
I've seen pertussis outbreaks in different times of, of the year. You know, typically we think of respiratory virus season as when lots of people are congregated indoors. Sometimes we'll see outbreaks in children who are, who are right at that age range of, of meeting the booster shot. And then that can perpetuate more transmission out in the community. But there are varying seasons and cycles. We used to say that, you know, every, every four to six years. And now they're saying three to five years. And something I read today said two to four years. So there's a lot of variation in the cycle as well as the, the season.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, April. It's very useful to get these periodic bulletins about infectious diseases and other public health issues around the community. So, appreciate it. Next up, we have Toby Lewis for our quarterly floodplain program update.
Good morning. So, this.
You're going to want to put the mic closer to yourself.
At some point, I will get used to hearing my voice echoing behind me. So, it'll take a little bit, though. Okay, so this morning's updates, we've got four topics. The biological opinion, so integration of National Flood Insurance Program and the Endangered Species Act, Mary's River Gauge, update on the community rating system, just some pieces moving there, and our Lucky Mute Watershed Flood Map Revision Open House. Before I get into that, I wanted to give a quick thank you to our public information staff for their postings and social media postings in early April about the importance of flood insurance. Statistically, there's about 40% of claims filed through the National Flood Insurance Program, flood insurance that are in low to moderate flood risk zones. So those are areas that are not mapped as hundred-year floodplain. So they're outside of that. Okay. Oh, I get to change the slides. There we go. Okay. Okay. So first up is the National Flood Insurance Program and the Endangered Species Act. This has to do with the biological opinion that was released several years ago. Benton County is a cooperating agency in reviewing the draft documentation that is being developed by FEMA. So this quarter's update is that draft documents have been distributed to all of the cooperating agencies up there. So we've got Benton County, Tillamook, Umatilla County, City of Portland, Department of Land Conservation and Development, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and the National Marine Fisheries Service. Those documents were distributed recently and include a draft model ordinance and drafts of the first three chapters of the Environmental Impact Statement document. Those first three chapters are an introduction, a purpose and need, and then an identification of four possible alternatives for the, let's see, what was it? For the National Environmental Policy Act. So first alternative is don't do anything. Second and third alternatives are no net loss option, one with exceptions and one without. And the fourth is a no net loss option or project-specific habitat assessments. I'll be meeting with several other employees in Public Works and Parks this afternoon so that we can get started on reviewing those documents. And comments will be due mid-June. Let's see. Next up on our, our topics is the Mary's River Gauge. So the gauge closure notice was recently removed from the USGS gauge website. That happened, I think, last week. So that was good news. In conversations with USGS staff, they were able to find some additional funding from an alternate source. So the gauge was previously funded exclusively through the federal priority funding source. It sounds like they found some additional funding through the Next Generation Water Observing System, which is intended to envision what water monitoring will look like in the future. So are we looking at things like in-water, above-water types of data, and improved gauge functionality, data collection and networks? The Willamette River Basin is the fourth of five current river basins that are being included in opportunities for funding through that source. The removal of the closure notice from the website is for now. The gauge is still eligible for future closure as the list of gauges that are funded exclusively by the USGS kind of becomes smaller and smaller. It means that each year it's up for, for potential closure. But one point of feedback that I got from USGS staff was that in the future, if that Mary's River Gauge is up for closure, they will contact local communities first and, and see if there are other options rather than just putting the, the notice on the, on the website. So that'll be helpful. And I'm continuing conversations with USGS and OSU. And we've got Magna Babar Stebbins looking at options for data collection and maybe some testing of new data, data collection methods and types and things like that. So she's, she's taking a look at that. And Philometh is continuing to reach out with questions about the gauge. So, still in conversations about that. And humanity rating system, so this, I wasn't, so this one is just, and just a update that FEMA is looking for ways to adjust the community rating system program. They've recognized that sometimes, well, many communities have minimal floodplain implementation resources and, and staff dedicated to floodplain management. And also that the, the documentation requirements can be rather extensive or are rather extensive for this program. And that's sometimes keeping communities from actively participating in the program or actively taking actions to reduce flood risk. So they're focusing on trying to identify methods of, that will help incentivize communities to take measurable actions to reduce flood risk, embedding equity as a fundamental principle of the program so that those documentation requirements are not getting in the way of communities participating, and encouraging owners to buy flood insurance and also delivering community-centric, a community-centric, modernized program. So it's just a heads-up that this is coming. They're working on it. They did a couple feedback sessions recently. And it'll be in the works probably for a couple of years, but it's on the horizon. And the last one is our open house. So this is for the Lucky Mute Watershed Flood Maps. Benton County has been partnering with the Army Corps of Engineers on a project to revise the flood hazard mapping in the Lucky Mute Watershed area. And as part of that project, we were able to, because, so there's two projects going on in Benton County. One is this one. The other one is FEMA's project to revise the flood hazard mapping for the rest of the county. And so as part of this Lucky Mute project, we were able to work with FEMA and get the flood hazard revision data for the, the creeks that feed into the Lucky Mute River so that we can get all of that in one project. So we'll be having an open house on May 30th out at Kings Valley Charter School for, and we've sent postcard invitations to all of the affected property owners. Those went out last week, I think, or could have been, I think it was last week. And we'll be hosting a hybrid so that people have an extra opportunity to attend if they're not able to actually get to the school that night. The draft maps are available online for people to take a look at if they'd like. What you're seeing on the screen here is the revised flood hazard mapping area. So, does this have a pointer with this? Yeah, I was just noticing that, if I can aim it in the right direction. It doesn't seem to work on the screen. Well, so the U-shaped version on the image on the, the left there, on the current flood hazard maps, most of that large green field in the center is mapped as flood hazard area. The striping on there will be a floodway designation. The blue shading will be 100-year flood hazard. And the orange shading is 500-year flood hazard. And then I included the image on the right because that has the Kings Valley Charter School there where the buildings are clustered. This also is an area where the flood hazard mapping is being significantly reduced based on better data. So, and, oh, and the risk map project that FEMA is doing, just to throw this in there, the latest update is that we may be able to see draft maps as early as summer or fall of this year. Summer is fast approaching, so I'm guessing maybe closer to fall or a little bit later. That's it. Any questions?
What time is the open house?
Oh, sorry, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock at Kings Valley Charter School.
Yeah. So we'll have a introduction and then a presentation by Corps of Engineers staff. And then that should be wrapping up about 7:00. And we'll have paper maps spread around the room so that people can go and take a look at those maps and see if there's anything that looks glaringly inaccurate based on their past experience with flooding in the area.
Thank you.
I plan to be there.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Look forward to having you there.
I do have a couple of questions. I know that as a participant in the biop process as, that one of the, one of the things that we agreed to do is to have some community engagement. So I'm curious about our review process. We're, staff are going to review these draft regulations in the first three chapters of the EIS. But will you then bring that back to the Board of Commissioners for discussion at a goal setting or something before providing comment? Or will you just provide that as staff? That's one question. And then the other is, at what point is there a broader community engagement in order to get input from Benton County as a cooperating agency into the process?
Yeah. So, yes, for sure. That was my absolute hope and desire when we entered into this process. The timeframe on which we are bound to respond is much more compressed than what I had anticipated or hoped for. So I can certainly look for a goal-setting session to bring this to you. The deadline for submitting comments is June 11th. So I will look for an option. And I've also been told that although that is the deadline, and we do need to get some comments submitted, as much as we have available, we can still continue to provide feedback beyond that. But the official submittal is due June 11th. So as far as doing a very broad-scale community outreach, that the nature of the documentation that's provided is considered draft and is provided to cooperating agencies as draft data for in-house review. We also still have the ability through the agreement to distribute that in some form or fashion, just not publish it as a widespread, like completely public view because that, that distribution will happen when it's officially provided as here's the public draft.
Yeah, that's understandable. Yeah, it's walking a line. Yeah. So. June 11th is our next goal-setting meeting. So, yeah. Let's just talk about it as part of our agenda setting and figure out what we might be able to do so that we can make sure that the board is behind staff's, you know, position when it comes to providing this feedback.
Yeah. I'm happy to come to that meeting. And the deadline, I'm sure, is 5:00 PM. So.
Yeah. Yeah. That sounds good. And the other question I had was, given that the Mary's River Gauge, at least for the short term, is going to be funded in part by this Next Generation Water Observation System, does that mean there's going to be improved instrumentation of the gauge? Or does it just mean that we are prolonging the life of the current gauge at this time?
Mostly it means we're just prolonging the life of the gauge. However, there was a temperature probe installed on the gauge, let's see, in July of this year, actually, with, with that funding.
Good.
So they had some funding to install some temperature probes. They selected that gauge as one of the options and then installed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I know that there's been quite a bit of mail going back and forth about that particular topic. So I'm, I think there are quite a few supporters. And hopefully with more advanced notice, we'll be able to cobble together, partner, yeah, to sustaining it. So, thank you.
Toby, you mentioned that the draft maps are available online. Is that on the county's website?
It is. So there's a bit.ly link that our public information staff put together. It is. So there's a bitly link that our public information staff put together. So the website revisions are still moving along. I can see if we can get that onto the community development website. I believe that the the front side of the postcard is going to be on our social media. I think this week and it has a link at the bottom of that to those draft maps. So.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it looks like those draft maps are something that the residents will be happy about because it it actually makes the burdens of building or living in a floodplain a little bit less onerous.
We're hoping so. Yeah. And, and the website, when, when you take a look at it, the first tab on there has those draft maps. Has it set up in a way so that you've got a slider? So you can see current floodplain map and then slide it over and see what so you can zoom in.
Helpful technology.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is Behavioral Health Deflection Program. I think we'll, Behavioral Health in partnership with the criminal justice system as a result of House Bill 4002. Rick Crager, Assistant County Administrator is presenting. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. So as, as Commissioner Ojero alluded to here today to talk about the Behavioral Health Deflection Program, which is better known as House Bill 4002. We may have the District Attorney and Sheriff here as just additional if they have comments that they want to like to provide. But my primary objective here today is just to give you an update on where things stand. Just as a quick overview for all of you, House Bill 4002 again creates the Oregon Behavioral Health Deflection Program. It is really meant to help us set up what is called a deflection program is defined, defined primarily as a collaborative process between behavioral health and law enforcement to help guide individuals who are substance abuse disorder primarily to be able to give them the supports they need and avoid the more costly justice system. So we have spent the last couple of months, I think, really learning a lot from the various different types of programs that are already offered, Marion County being one of the the largest and most successful, but there are a variety of others. I think many members, both Behavioral Health, Law Enforcement itself, I know Commissioner Ojero has been involved a lot as well as just again, attending a lot of the technical assistance webinars on exactly how best to set this up. The way the bill was written enabled us to receive dollars. All counties receive dollars based on a formula, statutory formula for the county that renders us approximately $233,000, which is not a lot of dollars. And that is for this by name only. It's general fund resources that run out June 30th of 2025. So dollars have to be expended by then. Also important to note that there may or may not be additional resources provided going forward in 2527, but I think indications are this will need to be obviously addressed in the 2025 legislative session on continuation. In terms of the dollars were provided, primarily can be used for planning or operational cost. So it really depends on each county on where they stand in relation to readiness. I think here in the county, it's clear that, you know, we do not have a deflection program in place. So part of this will be a lot of planning, development. And then hopefully eventually some operational cost as well, be able to cover that. To date, again, we have executed the agreement with the Criminal Justice Commission that provides us half those resources. So that has been executed. The second part of this application process will actually, we just got notice a few days ago, that's due on July 1. So this has been on a relatively big fast track. The legislative requirements put the state agency in a position to have to get the money out in a particular time frame. So this has been, been moving extremely fast. Some of the major requirements as it relates to getting this money is, is number one, that it's, it's a priority that we have to have a program coordinated, coordinated in place. So again, we do not have a program. Part of establishing this is to get some, someone established or a position established within the county that can help coordinate this. Plan this eventually help in terms of operating. And then there's some reporting and data requirements that come through the legislation that we have to have in place. Also, another requirement of the bill is that we clearly coordinate with specific entities or programs, obviously, as I mentioned, law enforcement. So the sheriff will need to be involved in any and all planning related to this. District Attorney will need to be involved. We need our community behavioral health person, Damian, has been involved in that. And then various service providers need to be, again, statutorily, this needs to be a committee to help us with planning. We did attend a symposium a few weeks back that again, gave us some more information. A good, good cohort of folks from Benton County were there to be able to listen and hear a little bit more about the programs and generate ideas. So for us specifically, outside of now, meaning through the pre-application process, we have established a project team in which I'm working to help facilitate that. That includes again, the people that I had mentioned earlier, but we also have the Health Department with April, April Holland, as well as Sarah Hart's team joining us. We have, we invited Juvenile Department Matt Weatherall to be a part of that as well. Commissioner Ojero has attended as a Board of Commissioner representative. We've had Lacy Millwell with our Community Health Center. So we're trying to be fully engaged. We so far have had one meeting, which is really our initial internal discussion, try to get a framework of, of the best way to approach this. So I can tell you last week, that first meeting was held and good discussion. I think some of the primary things that we talked about and will need to decide on is, you know, first and foremost, who, who we serve. So I think it's very clear, obviously, individuals that have been cited in some way with different substance abuse, BCS misdemeanor only is primarily what we're looking at in relations to citations. But again, there's that, there's low risk, there's high risk. And I think that's really the, the big conversation we have to land on. We certainly know that there's huge need across the gambit. We also have to be thoughtful about what our capacity is. And I think that's the big if anything, in terms of the message that we got from the symposium a few weeks is think small and when you think small, think smaller. So to be able to get yourself going, Marion County was a good example where initially they started out with not all jurisdictions in the county. They had two, I believe, the city of Salem as well as the county. And then now they're up to 11. I believe. So it's an opportunity for us to start and maybe build going forward. But that's an area that first and foremost, we'll need to land on. I think another, as I mentioned with the Marion County example, is the geographical scope. Are we talking all county? Is this going to be engaging with all law enforcement in relation to cities, county, et cetera? So that will be a key piece of the decision. A point of actual assessment. So once again, we've identified the eligible individuals. They've been cited. Where do they get directed to in relation to actual assessment of their situation? To determine what services they need. We have been brainstorming the idea of the Crisis Center. That was what was part of our initial concept. I think that was seen very favorably by the CJC as a good point of contact in terms of an assessment. I think another element that was discussed that's important is navigation. So if, once someone is cited or once they are deemed eligible, I think successful programs have a navigator with that individual at that point to be able to guide them to that point of assessment and then beyond that in terms of the actual services. So again, that was something coming out of our project group as an important element that we will need to factor in. I think the, the piece that we've talked a lot about and will be kind of the segue into our next steps is depending again on the eligibility and what are the deemed services that are needed is what is our capacity? So I think, you know, from the standpoint of maybe lower risk individuals, there is perhaps capacity from a county standpoint to provide various types of services. I think when we get into maybe more complex type substance abuse treatment as well as behavioral health disorders, we have to really think about where, where does that service come from? And if there are providers in the community or if it's the county, do we have those supports in place? And at our next meeting, we are inviting two of our service providers to the table, which is again, another part of the legislation to really start to understand that more and where are our opportunities? So at this point, it's again, kind of early stages. I think we, and I feel like we're on track. We're doing, we're getting the right people around the table, starting to have the discussions about best practices, about the best way to approach this, really project map this or, or be able to help us with the decision tree, if you will, in terms of how this works. Again, I'm running up to the July 1st deadline that we have to get the next application and it has to be much more specific exactly on how we're going to use that money. It's not required to be used again for operational. It can be used for planning if that's where we see that we're at. But again, we're going to have a lot of work that needs to kind of come together here in the next 45 days. So that's a quick overview of where things stand at this point. Yeah, this is exciting work. It's a great opportunity for us. While it's not a huge amount of dollars, I think we also see opportunities to leverage. We've talked a lot with Health Department around leveraging, leveraging some of our opioid settlement funds. That has accumulated quite a bit and this is a definite eligible purpose, be it perhaps navigation, be it perhaps service provisions. So that's a conversation that we will obviously be having and how we blend and braid some of the, the resources that we have. So that's my, my quick overview of where things stand. I'm happy to answer any questions on the process so far. And like you said, I don't know if there's others. I know April is here. But there's others from the group I'm sure would be willing to weigh in if there are questions.
Couple of things. You, you mentioned that the, our Crisis Center could be part of this operation as a separate part or just integrated into what we plan on its normal function.
Yeah, no, great question. I, you know, again, part of this is that we have to design exactly how the, the program would flow, but conceptually where we're at right now is, you know, think about it from the standpoint of a law enforcement engagement with somebody that is deemed as perhaps eligible for the program, maybe someone that's suffering from substance abuse at the time. And as opposed to citing that individual, they get a chance to deflect. And so where is the point that we can direct them? So it would be taking them to the Crisis Center to where they would be entering for an assessment. And then at that point, it becomes a more comprehensive assessment to determine what, what's the best treatment? So to answer your question, Crisis Center would still be as, as intended, but this would be a tool in our toolbox to be able to, to direct them. That's how we're seeing it right now. Now, we have to obviously be, one of the conversations was depending on who's eligible, how many people are we talking about? And so that could have impacts on our operations for the Crisis Center. So we need to be very thoughtful about that as well.
My other question, I know we have the core program between Benton County Mental Health and Corvallis Police is does this effort or do these dollars fit into that program at all?
Yeah, they absolutely will. Yes.
Yeah. And in terms of some of the legislative discussions, that was a, a part of what was being discussed because these dollars could be used in part to increase the capacity of core type programs and to hire the law enforcement side of it. Because the dollars that came from the state legislature to stand up these mental health crisis response programs did not include the capacity for law enforcement hires. So by putting those two together, then you can have funding for both sides of that partnership. So part of what I see is that we have a lot of the elements of a deflection program, but they have not been put together into a system or a process. So we already also have our harm reduction team, which is out working with this population on a regular basis. The core team, the Community Livability Team at the Corvallis Police Department. Samaritan has the Street Outreach Team. And we need to think about partnering with Oregon State University as well. So I think that we have a lot of, we're rich in components, but we don't have is the assembly.
I think as, as we move, move this forward and to Commissioner Ojero's point, and be part of it is sort of the, the initial foundation, as I like to say, is how we build that. How do we build that framework? And then where we go from that. And I think the thing identified through the legislation is that we need to have coordinator. We need to have somebody that can work on these type things. We may need navigation as well, but that's a critical piece to this. And, and I think we've still determining exactly where is the best place to land that. But having someone that can continue to do exactly what Commissioner Ojero, Ojero talked about is bringing those partners more together and taking those components and making a, a system out of them as opposed to individual siloed approaches.
On the timing of the funding, is this something that in the upcoming long session next year that need to be engaged, even though it will be early days in, in the, now what we're doing with the current money, but seems like we would need to be active in making sure that the funding continues.
Absolutely. So obviously the Board of Commissioners and we will have a conversation about our priorities as we head up for the 2025 state legislative session. As you alluded to, it's a long session. I have to imagine this would be one of the things on the top of our list. Obviously, this is going to have probably AOC attention from, from the get go because this involves every county. So everybody's all in on this. I, this will absolutely be a pretty, a big discussion going into the next session.
I can tell you from yesterday's Health and Human Services meeting for Association of Oregon Counties, it's already on the, on the radar. And it is likely to be a priority.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My question had to do with the money. So the $231,548, that's our total amount, all for planning, correct? And we're, and we've received half of it or are receiving half of it.
So thank you for correcting me on my, I think I said 233 approximately. Thank you for giving me the exact number on that.
I missed when you said that.
So the, to answer, yes, we've executed the agreement that gives us 50% of it. The dollars can be planning or operational, but at this point, since we don't have a program, we're still trying to, you know, we, we have to put a budget into our next portion of the application that tells how all of this money is going to be spent. But initially, we're probably going to need it for a coordinator or, or expenses towards a coordinator. Again, we'll still design that. I think where some of the programmatic operational stuff could come from is again, back to where do we identify maybe some of those resources? Or maybe the resource is already out there and we don't know it. And, and how do we better, as Ojero alluded to, how we better connect? So so it's optional on both.
Okay. So we can use it for planning or the program. And then yes, of course, that's my question is how do we fund the ongoing program? But it sounds like we have some ideas of work to do to.
Yeah. And as I mentioned, this is a bit, be part of the legislative discussion is I think everybody's question is, well, what if I stand something up? How does it continue to sustain? And I think well, no one can make a commitment that resources are going to be there in 2527. You have to believe that that is where the, where, where it's heading. And, and there will be a lot of pressure on that. But as I said, there's also going to be challenges to counties to try to figure out how to use existing resources that maybe aren't tapped into.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to acknowledge that Chief Deputy District Attorney Ryan Jocelyn just stepped into the room. So if there are any questions for So if there are any questions for Chief Deputy DA, welcome up to the table.
Yeah, and thanks. And Ryan has been, excuse me, Deputy DA.
It's a long title.
He's been awesome in terms of answering, always answering my dumb questions, but I'll let him add anything he'd like.
You need to turn on the mic, however.
Was there a specific question?
No, we just are in the middle of overview discussion and presentation by Rick Cragor of where we are to date in terms of developing a deflection program out of, out of our current resources and with the addition of funds from the state.
Yeah, well, we're excited about the program. Rick may have indicated we intend to start small and that's the why it's prudent, of course. And depending on how things go, I could see the potential to broaden it up the type of folks that are allowed into the program. Right, right now, the, as I'm sure the commissioners are aware, we're dealing with challenges with the jail and places and resources for folks of these lower level crimes. And so this is just an opportunity to provide a pre-charging, pre-court opportunity to get some folks some help. And I'm personally excited about the program.
Any other questions? No, but I voted for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, I've heard the term deflection passed around and I didn't really, I have a clearer picture now what that means. Appreciate that. And it is an exciting opportunity and that legislatively makes no sense to have a two-year program and then say, well, good luck. You're barely started and this needs to be an ongoing funding from the state.
Again, I'm just closing saying a lot of appreciation for the partnership. It was a really fun, actually a great meeting last week. It was fun to have so many ideas and just, as always, like they say, certified smart people around the table that really were just bringing up all the things that you don't think about. And it really helps with the clarity and helping us get the best program. So Assistant DA has been awesome and the sheriff has been very much engaged as well as Damian in April. So again, I'm just excited about this continuing to move forward. And like Ryan said, continuing to build on it and making it better and better.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up in our work session is item 5.4, the Courthouse Preservation Committee update with Paul Wallsinger from Facilities and Judy Juntenen, who's the Chair of the Courthouse Preservation Committee. And you may note a theme in this agenda. There's a lot on historical resources and it's no accident. This is Historic Resources Preservation Month. And so we are also have another item later in the agenda regarding the future of the historic courthouse.
So I am the Chair of the Benton County Courthouse Preservation Committee. And this last summer and, and we have been working on looking at the bylaws, which was surprise to us because we'd never been presented them before. But anyway, we've been working on those. We also worked on a mission statement and we found the founding document for the, for the, the committee, which was an ad hoc committee until 1986. And then it was changed into a formal committee because of the centennial in 1988.
When was it, when was the committee first formed as an ad hoc committee?
Um, let's see. I guess it was around for a while. It doesn't, I don't have, have a date on that. But this document is dated of August of 1986 for changing it to the name of the Ad hoc Courthouse Renovation Committee to the Courthouse Preservation Committee. I imagine that committee, if I'm remembering correctly, was in, very much involved when they were restoring, doing all kinds of renovations to the courthouse.
Yeah, and adding the third floor for the deputy's office, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah. So I brought it so that it could go into the, the file. It's at the records department, but what I found amazing was they found it quickly. That's good news for the county. So over the time that the committee has, has worked, we have advised the commissioners on, on things, changes that needed to be made in the courthouse. And I'm happy to report that the changes that have been made have really kept the historic character of the courthouse while bringing it up to as close as we can get to recent the technology that's necessary for today. Based on research of use of historic furniture, we had several years ago, the original furniture chairs refinished and reupholstered so that they would, could remain. We also, in more recent times, we acquired a cabinet that was original in the courthouse and appears in early pictures of the courthouse. We did an inventory of historic artifacts that we need to update. We refinished the doors. That was quite an adventure because the doors aren't quite exactly rectangular. And we added when, when the county discovered that the plywood that had been used for the planters on the staircase had to be replaced. Rather than just do it again, we managed to get a planter stand fitting again with the, with the historic courthouse. And I, I do believe we probably have the most beautiful security station in the United States. And one of the people on our committee says that, who's our person who knows a lot about construction. So if that comes out or when that comes out, because it will be coming out. And there are only three bolts that hold it down. So whenever they made a change, they tried to do it so that it could be restored to its original in closing the staircase and was another one. And so I'm not sure how they're going to do about the third floor. That's probably considered to be an evolutionary change. Okay, so current membership, there are four of us remaining on the, on the committee. We have Pete Barnheisel, who's our lawyer. We have Rick Scott, who's our construction person. Jill Van Buren, who worked in records in elections for years, has done an incredible job doing courthouse tours and making the courthouse available to the, the public. Our current initiatives are that we are interested in creating a history of the courthouse. And we're not quite sure what that looks like, but we are anxious to do that. I brought the mission statement that we had put together. And this morning I read it out loud and realized that I should have done that before. So I added two words. So I'll just read the mission. "The mission of the Benton County Courthouse Preservation Committee is to preserve the historic integrity of the courthouse. The National Register of Historic Places listed Benton County courthouse, including its interior and exterior, using the Secretary of the Interior's standards for preservation and rehabilitation. The artifacts and furnishings as inventoried and the setting and exterior grounds, as noted in the National Register nomination, by providing advisory recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on matters concerning the courthouse. Included in the mission is overseeing and deciding on spending the Louisa B. Dubois bequest to the Benton County Trust Fund for the purpose of restoration and maintenance of the courthouse. And that fund has paid for a number of the projects that have, that have been, that have happened. For example, they re-buying the cabinet and inventory, those kinds of things. So so we talked about the inventory. The inventory that was done was done a number of years ago. And we need to go back. I mean, many, many changes have been made in the courthouse since the inventory was done. We need to go back and see what happened to some of the things. And we have used the room, which we call the Centennial Room, right by the security station. We have used called that, we have used that kind of for our historic things. One of the things that we did do was that we copied, got copies of all of like the judges and searched for pictures of judges that, that we did not have. And there are copies now at the Benton County courthouse. Not Benton County courthouse, the museum, Benton County Historical Museum. So that's one of the things that we need to do. And is there anything else you want to add?
No, not on that, not on that. Public Works does have a copy of that historic inventory that was completed, I believe somewhere in the early 2000s. And as the courthouse starts coming into its transition to the new courthouse, we will be re-reviewing and checking that inventory to make sure that we are maintaining these historic items in the courthouse.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, I, I do, but I'll start with Commissioner Wise. Oh, I was just thinking, you were talking about the inventory and the furniture and pieces like that. It just made me remember that in 2021 or 2022, I came across at the Albany Antique Mall, a big like card catalog or cabinet that said from the, you know, Benton County courthouse. And I remember being like, oh, that's sad that that's not in the courthouse. I wonder how that, you know, left. And if I had a place to put it, I would have bought it. But, so I have no idea what happened to it, but.
It's in the courthouse.
Is it, is that the piece? That's awesome.
That was the cabinet that we purchased.
Okay, that's great. That's great news.
I have a couple of questions. I know that we met with you yesterday in the context of interviewing new community members to appoint to the Courthouse Preservation Committee. So I'm excited about the fact that there's been a good community interest. Thank you for helping to recruit for that. And so hopefully we will have a much more person power for you to continue with the work of the Courthouse Preservation Committee. I did want to comment on the mission statement because it refers so much to a preservation of the artifacts and the historic nature, but not to the future of the courthouse. And I know that in our item upcoming, the very tail end of our agenda today, when we hear the Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee report, one of the recommendations is that your committee pick up that role of doing future visioning and helping to shape the future use of the courthouse. And I was wondering whether or not that that should be reflected in this mission statement.
And, and that's probably, and that is a very good point and something that we've talked about in the committee. But we really weren't sure what our role would be. And I, I think we will, we would probably revise the mission statement. We had never had a mission statement before and it just seemed like that was a logical thing to, to have. So I, I think that reflects now, but it does not reflect what's going to be happening. So.
So when we discuss that item later in the agenda, the topic will come up again. And yeah, we probably will provide some direction to broaden that mission statement a bit.
And we, we did, we did have some suggestions. And I mentioned this yesterday because we did have some suggestions about changes to the bylaws. And we ran them through county council and county council suggested that they weren't ones that would be necessarily, would be changed. But in going through the bylaws and studying them so closely, I realized that there were two sections that we have not used. And one is advisors and the other one is subcommittees. And I think that we, that we will propose that we, we get more people involved, not necessarily that have a vote, but, and that may not, you know, for many people, that might not be necessary for them to want to, to help the committee. So I think that's a great way to, because what we were worried about with the two terms was that we would lose the expertise. So now that, that can be taken care of and those things. So we appreciate your input.
Thank you. Well, you know, I was very grateful to see this item on the agenda and to read the background information because this particular committee has been a little bit of a off to the side advisory committee. And we, it's the first time we formally had a connection as the Board of Commissioners since I've been in office.
I know, I know. I think I told you yesterday that when I saw that the terms were two, three-year terms and I've been on the committee since 1988, how much longer is?
Right, and, and for the board, Public Works has really picked up the torch on this committee. We're in the process of rebuilding a robust administrative process around this committee. We have a member assigned to the committee to take minutes and make sure those get posted to the new website. We're creating welcome packets for the new members that will be coming on board. And so anyway, it's, we're, we're sort of rebuilding that whole administrative process around it to make sure that we continue carrying this torch into the future.
Thank you.
And, and I think one of the issues in the past has been that the chair was not real involved in this kind of communication. Everything was taken care of by our, our, our staff person that, you know, and so because I, I just felt that the chair really needed to know more and really needed to be more involved in, in communicating. So that's, that's, that's what happened over the last two years.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. And I'm happy to hear the direction the committee is taking.
Thank you very much.
So would you like a copy for the file or the founding document?
That would be great. You can leave it with Erica. Okay. At this point, I am going to suggest that we take a quick five-minute break and come back with the consent calendar and move on into the rest of our agenda. and come back with the consent calendar and move on into the rest of our agenda. Eleven. I am going to bring us back from our five-minute recess, which was a long five-minute recess or a slow five-minute recess instead of a fast one. And we'll go back to business with the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I do want to just note that included in the consent calendar, in addition to a board meeting minutes from February 20, we have a proclamation proclaiming May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Benton County. We have so many proclamations that some of them are included in the consent calendar, but we don't want to ignore some of these proclamations altogether. So that's our vehicle. Next up, we are going to move into old business because the public hearing must be held at 11:00 a.m. And old business, do we have? Okay. We have Debbie Sessions with us presenting approval of assessment and tax grant application, CAFSA. This is a reapproval because of circulation back to the state.
Yes. Good morning. So when we submitted our CAFSA grant, the Department of Revenue had a couple of questions, primarily around, at the time, the questions were about staffing, which we answered. But then it came to our attention about the assessment and tax software that is being purchased. And so there was an amendment to the application about how much will actually be spent in this coming year, which reduced that amount down to a little over $100,000. But as part of that, we still have to come back to you all for another approval so we can resubmit it. So that is what we're requesting.
Are there any questions for Debbie? I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the 2024-2025 CAFSA grant documents, certifications, and resolution as presented and authorize the interim Chief Financial Officer to digitally sign the online documents on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and submit to the Oregon Department of Revenue.
Ready? Second. I fell asleep there. All in favor, please signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving into new business, the first item is 2023 Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Plan Annual Report with Shiana Steingas from Public Works. During.
Good morning. Sounds like you can hear me. I can hear myself. My name is Shay Steingas. I'm the Environmental Project Coordinator for Public Works. I coordinate the Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program, as well as some other various environmental-type things. Today, I wanted to give you an update on the AWPP, as it's a lot shorter to call that, and kind of let you know what has happened in the last year. So the Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program is really a one-of-a-kind community grant program where farmers with any size of agricultural operation in the county can apply for reimbursements to implement non-lethal deterrents such as fencing, livestock housing, livestock guardian animals, and other sound or light-based deterrents to prevent and mitigate conflicts with wildlife as an alternative to trapping or killing predators or beaver. As of this biennium, the AWPP was approved for $47,475. And this also includes up to $5,000 for outreach and education, as well as up to $5,000 of emergency funds. We typically run on an annual grant cycle where folks can apply through the month of October, and awards are given out in January where folks have until the end of April to implement their projects. This is a current change from the previous program, which, when we had a fall-based implementation period, but that was very difficult because of the shortened day length as well as precipitation. This year, we allotted a large amount of our funds, and we currently have about $15,000 left for the next grant application cycle. In terms of the outreach that we try to perform, I participated in several events, including the OSU Small Farms Conference. We did put in for a speaker for that, but they opted to see if we wanted to have a webinar separately. So in that case, we would have used our outreach and education funds for travel and housing for a speaker. I also was at the Benton County Fair and Rodeo where we had a static booth. I'm hoping in the future to be there and talk about the program more. We did a radio interview with KSKQ Ashland earlier this year, talking about wildlife coexistence and agriculture, and that went fairly well. I also went to the Winter Market and spoke to folks there. There's a surprising number of people from outside of Benton County at the Winter Market. So a lot of folks got really excited, and then I asked where they were from, and turns out they were from Lynn County or adjacent counties. So that was good information to know that folks are at least excited about the program. We put an annual press release out that was subsequently picked up by KEZI, which was exciting. And as part of the website revamp, we have completely redone, I guess I should say, I completely redid all of our webpages to make them more user-friendly. And they include a number of resources for folks to learn about. Another exciting outreach project we performed was working with the city of Corvallis and a number of other collaborators, which included Mary's River Watershed Council, the Bonneville Environmental Foundation, and NOAA to install a pond leveler at Bruce Starker Arts Park in Corvallis that was funded by USDA Beaver Mitigation Funds. And that was to hopefully keep the parking lot from flooding every year, and it did work to some extent. But talks are in the works as to how to continue to improve that. There was some really good beaver outreach that happened during that installation. And there's now a Living with Beavers webpage on the city site that links back to Benton County and the AWPP. We also created a small promotional video last summer talking about the AWPP, and that's gotten hundreds of views as well and is on the county webpage. So amongst all of this outreach, that was actually really fun and really positive, we actually had a record number of applications this year. We received 17 applications. Previously, I think the most we had gotten was nine, and we were able to fund six projects plus two emergency grants. And as I said, we have about $15,000 remaining for next year's grants. Grants can be up to $5,000. And in addition, we still do have emergency funds available, depending on how this year goes. So in comparison with previous years, where up to 86% of our applicants were funded, we were able to fund 46%. But projects were generally founded at the, funded at the full requested amount. And we have four that are completed. We actually have two that are wrapping up because the precipitation made it a little impossible to put fencing in this spring. So I'll go visit them pretty soon. The two emergency grants that we funded were farms experiencing poultry losses from small predators and actually a bird of prey. And our main awards were for sheep, chickens, goats, and geese. One of our farms has 350 sheep, so really the dollar value of the program shows there where we're able to protect over 300 animals. And this grant included electric fencing, as well as two guardian donkeys, which hopefully I'll get to meet when I do the farm visit. This year was really difficult to choose, so we had a number of outstanding applications this year. This was my third year looking at applications along with the committee. We do a blind review where everyone's identifying information is removed, and there's a scoring matrix. Because of the number of applications, we decided to cut off awards or give awards to first-time applicants only, because we did have a number of repeat applicants that have gotten full awards in the past. So that was a difficult decision. We also had a number of prospective farms that were applying, which we don't discourage because often when folks have wildlife encounter issues, it's easier to head off at the beginning of their implementation or beginning of them keeping animals rather than jumping into a site that already has conflicts. So that being said, we hope that the program continues to grow, and we think it will. But the decreased ability to fund folks who apply may become an issue in the future if successive applications becomes lower, because a lot of these folks are people who are experiencing predation. Just as some basic info, about half of our projects historically have included standard or electric fencing in animal housing. And the most commonly encountered species of wildlife conflict are coyotes, raccoons, bobcats, birds of prey, and cougars. Cougars traditionally are the hardest species to deter just because they can get through almost anything. Funding this year ranged from $548 to $5,000, and all of the applicants were from Corvallis, Albany, or Philomath areas. In general, the program seems to have overwhelmingly positive reception. And again, the spring implementation timeline seems to be working better for folks except for kind of our unusual amount of rain and high-volume storms this year that made the ground a little bit soft. So I think kind of to wrap up, a summary of the program, it seems that increased public outreach, as well as word of mouth, is really resulting in growing program interest. It's currently funded through road fund dollars, and it's possible the next biennium, we may include a request of a general fund match or some matching funds to help grow this positive program. I'm also going to look into other funding opportunities to help supplement what we're doing. It's a fabulous program because all of that money goes back to taxpayers and folks that are performing sustainable local agriculture. I've been doing wildlife science for almost 15 years now, and to be part and to be part of a program where everybody's happy, all of the animals are protected and conserved is really, it's really amazing. And this is a really unique program. I think that shines positively for the county. As of today, I've received calls from Deschutes, Jackson, and Minnes- Minnesotino Counties, actually, who are interested in starting a program like the AWPP. There was a wildlife omnibus bill in the legislature this year that included a consultation program that was modeled after AWPP. That component did not pass, but I think that really shows how visible and unique this program is. We also are working with the USDA to continue non-lethal beaver mitigation for private residents in municipalities. And in general, everything's been going fairly well, and I look forward to next year's applications. And that's about it for the program. I'm happy to answer questions. And I also have included with the packet USDA reports from 2023 in terms of wildlife interactions and deer pickup from wildlife services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the report and that this experimental program is, I think, past the experimental stage and is functioning fairly well. I'm curious about what other funding sources other than just county funds? You mentioned USDA. I know they have programs. Has there been any conversation with those folks to see about help with this program?
Yeah, that's a great question. I have definitely been working with them in terms of the beaver side of things, and there are available funds there that I'm able to lump in. We did not have private beaver-specific requests this year besides the city, which is really interesting because people do call ODFNW, et cetera, and we've talked about getting that communication pipeline cleared up a little bit. In terms of other grants, that's pretty preliminary at this point. I'm going to just start looking. But there's a number of federal or smaller grants that are wildlife and habitat connectivity-based. So I think AWPP is really unique in that. It's kind of a different type of program, but that might benefit us in terms of applying for funding. So I can, I'm happy to keep you all posted on that.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. It seems like at this point we have a track record and it's not just funding a concept. It's funding could allow us to expand our efforts. Seems like that's a good idea. But, and let us know what the board can do to help with funding alternatives.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I'm happy to pursue that. I really enjoy grant writing. So we'll see how it goes, and I will keep you posted. Thank you so much.
Did you hear that, Rick? She enjoys grant writing.
I didn't say I was good at it, but.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm excited to see that the program has really got strong legs under it now. And I'm also happy to hear that you're working with USDA. I was wondering, there are different parts of agency, of course, and the part that's working on Beaver and Beaver Collaborative, is that different from the AFIS folks? Or are they working together?
It's a subset of the same folks.
Okay, good. I'm really glad to hear that. It's taken time to build that collaboration, and I'm glad to hear that it's getting stronger.
Yeah, yeah, that's always my goal. So thank you, and the sheep and chickens and geese and goats, thank you too.
Thank you. I bet the bobcats and some of the other predators are also grateful. Okay, moving on, we, oh, we need to accept the report. There is a motion in the packet to accept the report from the AWPP program.
Do you know what page that motion is on, Commissioner Ogier? I move to approve the 2023 Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program Annual Report.
Second?
All in favor, signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I encourage folks to go to the website. There's a lot of good information and great photos. Next up is approval to apply for Intercommunity Health Network Coordinated Care Organization Community Capacity Building Fund Grant, April Holland.
Hi again. I can try to get through this by 11 o'clock for the public hearing. But as Commissioner Ogier stated, I'm here to request approval, your approval for a couple of applications to the IHN CCBF for Community Capacity Building Funds Grant due at the end of May. Lacey Muller is unable to be here today. She's traveling for work. But as you know, health services, the Health Department and CHC are closely aligned. And Lacey and I decided that I can bring both of our applications to you for, to request your approval. So as I said, the grant is administered by Intercommunity Health Network, CCO, with funding from Oregon Health Authority. Through Oregon's current 1115 Medicaid waiver, the state will be covering new services for members of the Oregon Health Plan called Health Related Social Needs, or HRSN. These include climate benefits, nutrition benefits, and housing, as well as a lot of outreach. So this grant is designed to increase organizations' capacity to engage with those health-related social needs and the healthcare system through multiple different means: technology, business development, workforce development, and outreach, education, and bringing folks together. In total, IHN has 2.5 million statewide to, in one-time funding, to increase capacity to help individuals access HRSN benefits. So I'll just briefly go over what each the Health Department and CHC intend to apply for, and then talk just for a sec about the alignment and how this, how this will forward our vision and mission. So the Coordinated Homeless Response Office will include a request for staffing, training, and administrative costs for the Flexible Housing Subsidy Pool Program. We do anticipate on drawing on multiple resources to meet the needs of the people served by the Flex Pool Program. And having the capacity and knowledge to access these HRSN benefits for OHP members will be a useful resource to address homelessness and help secure stable housing for people in our community. The request will amount to a quarter of the cost of our two new limited-duration staff positions currently in recruitment to build capacity to connect our unhoused community members with HRSN benefits. And in terms of fiscal impact, you know, these are limited-duration positions. We are hiring the limited-duration positions with HB 5019 funds. So receiving an offset and to build capacity to connect folks with HRSN benefits would free approximately $180,000 in flexible funds that can go to direct services to individuals. I'll also share that the Coordinated Homeless Response Office is closely connected with IHN. We meet monthly on our Flex Pool project and other ongoing initiatives. So moving on to the CHC's application, it's also connected in with public health. They propose to use the CCBF funds to increase capacity by developing a specialized curriculum to be administered through the Community Health Worker Training Hub, which is located in our Health Navigation Program. This curriculum will be tailored to healthcare providers, allied health providers, CBOs, and community health workers specifically to serve justice-involved populations and their families and those support systems that serve them to help facilitate their reentry process. The aim of this application will be to enhance the capacity to become a Medicaid billing provider of health-related social needs services. So the Training Hub will focus on building skills necessary to address the unique health and social needs of the justice-involved population, promoting reintegration and ultimately reducing recidivism. This approach is rooted in trauma-informed care, cultural competence, and evidence-based practices that are responsive to our community's needs. So these applications will align with IHN and county goals to support health equity and integrate care for vulnerable populations, including unhoused community members and individuals transitioning from incarceration. In improving the capacity of Benton County Health Services to connect eligible OHP members with 1115 waiver health-related social needs benefits, we will provide comprehensive culturally-appropriate support to enhance the health outcomes and overall well-being of underserved individuals and their communities. The applications will underscore our commitment to filling critical service gaps. And they align with state priorities under Oregon's 1115 Medicaid waiver, targeting key population at high risk of health disparities. So thanks for your time this morning. We sincerely appreciate your approval to submit applications for the CCBF Fund Grant.
Are there questions for April?
Yeah, I guess I'd like a little more information on this is one-time funding. Do you have any sense that? What's the likelihood of re-upping on the funding to continue this?
Thanks, Commissioner. So these funds as capacity-building funds are anticipated to be one-time funds. We are looking at other IHN and other funding sources for sustainability of the Coordinated Homeless Response Office staff, for sure. I believe that the CHC application as a curriculum build will not entail, you know, permanent staff member additions. I think for the Coordinated Homeless Response Program that we're building with the Flexible Housing Subsidy Pool, this is a win-win because we need these limited-duration positions anyway and offsetting some of those costs and bringing on the capacity for health-related social needs is a good thing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm really happy to see this as a connection to IHN CCO, our Coordinated Care Organization, and to firm up that partnership with the Coordinated Care Organization with respect to the Coordinated Housing, Homelessness Response Office. Boy, crow. That one is always a mouthful. So that's exciting. It seems like good timing too, because again, this population is often one that has substance use disorders. It overlaps with the deflection population, and it just gives us that much more of the infrastructure to actually build a system to help people before they become justice-involved if at all possible.
My question is, so it's in the packet, it states that the Coordinated Homeless Response Office and the Community Health Centers will both be applying for the grant? So they're applying separately or together separately?
Separate applications. We are in close coordination to ensure that we're demonstrating the work that we're doing and how it aligns as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Ready for a motion?
I'll move to approve the request from the Health Department and the Community Health Centers to each submit an application for the IHN CCO Community Capacity Building Fund Grant.
Second? All in favor, please signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye. And this great opportunity is open to community-based organizations as well, correct?
You mentioned that, yes, Commissioner, and we, in the Coordinated Homeless Response Office, have engaged service providers. And I know of at least one who is submitting an application as well.
Okay, yeah. Do you anticipate that it's going to be a very competitive opportunity? Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know that, yeah, Oregon Health Authority has been doing an awful lot of promotion of this opportunity and working with CCOs closely, so we'll see. Okay. Moving next to our public hearing, since we are just past 11 a.m., and I would invite Debbie Sessions and Jen Ambul up to the table. I'm not sure whether Rick Craig is participating. No. Okay. So this public hearing is with respect to Supplemental Budget 241101 for Community Health Centers, Resolution Number 2024-006.
Thank you. Good to see all of you once again. So as we did to, this is for the supplemental budget related to our Community Health Center. We had given you a presentation a few weeks ago in relation to this. A couple of comments I want to make and certainly can answer any follow-up questions in relation to, any follow-up questions you may have in terms of the presentation. But want to make sure to note that with this, I like to call this as opposed to a rebalance. I like to be able to focus on it being kind of a right sizing, I guess is the best way to put it in terms of the budget itself. There are no service reductions in relation to this in that we had essentially been able to reevaluate the revenues that were coming in and then being able to right-size the budget to those revenues. Obviously, there are more opportunities for services out there, and if we are able to leverage more dollars down the road, we will be able to actually increase those services. But it doesn't change anything that we have been doing for the biennium in terms of behavioral health services, in terms of primary care services. Again, it's just getting in alignment. Now, to be able to do that, clearly, there were some changes that we made in terms of particular positions, maybe choosing not to fill them as quickly or leaving them vacant to be able to balance that budget. But again, it did not impact any of the services. I think the other thing that is important to recognize in this budget rebalance is the fact that we have seen high vacancies with our healthcare providers or with particularly in behavioral health. So again, that contributes to all of this as well. And hopefully, if we're able to get more hiring, which will ultimately increase more revenue and to support particularly around the behavioral health services, we'll be able to expand on our services going forward. So that was, I think, again, I mentioned that in our last presentation, and I wanted to make sure I was clear on it. Sorry, Debbie or Jen, is there anything you want to add?
And do you have a brief presentation or we're just heading into public hearing?
Just heading into public hearing, the presentation was all done at the previous session.
Well, I will now open the public hearing on Supplemental Budget 241101 for Community Health Centers. Is there anyone who would like to testify with respect to this budget amendment? Hearing, no one. I will close the public hearing, and we will begin deliberations, or I'm ready for a motion.
Well, just ask some questions, I guess. So thank you, Rick, for stating that this is a rebalance and that services were not cost. And kind of along those same lines, I think we are accused of putting lives at risk, and that is not the case, correct?
That is, that is correct. Again, right sizing the budget and in balance with the services that we have been providing to date.
Thank you. And so the way that, so I'm going to try to boil it down and really see, see if I can say it plainly. So things like we budgeted to pay money for some positions that we don't have. So we no longer need to pay that money. So we need to make sure that all the numbers are right and reflect that we are not paying out that money, correct?
That, that is, that is correct. And I think, you know, aspect to this that's important, I think, that you're alluding to is that with the Community Health Centers, remember, this is an enterprise fund. And so as an enterprise fund, it generates the dollars through mostly Medicaid reimbursement, private insurance payments, et cetera. So it's like a business in, in government. So it's a little different than resources that we typically see that come from property tax, let's say. And I think that's some, sometimes is a little confusing from a public standpoint is the thought that there's dedicated general fund resources. While we have a small portion of that, the majority of that. So if the revenue's out there, obviously, you have to be able to get into balance.
Sure. So similarly, we were originally projecting money coming in. It is not going to be coming in, so we just have to write, we just have to fix those numbers and say, we're not expecting that money, or that money has not come in. We are not taking millions of dollars out of the CHC and paying Public Works, for example.
Commissioner Wise, you're absolutely correct. We are not making any transfers out of the enterprise funds for the Community Health Center for any other purpose.
Thank you. There's just been a lot of misinformation out in the community and a lot of interest in this. And I completely understand it's complicated. People don't always know how to find the answers. But no one showed up today for the public hearing. So that's, it is what it is. I just, I would like to invite all members of the public who are concerned about issues like this in the future to please show up to these meetings.
Kind of the, the bottom line is no positions were cut. We just weren't able to fill positions because of the competition for behavioral health folks. And that's an ongoing problem. And hopefully, there's some people in schools that are being attracted to this field because of the, the need that we have. So hopefully, there's help on the way. But I appreciate the clarification of what's going on here.
Well said, Commissioner Malone. Again, you know, in the, in this particular program, which is again quite unique than other programs that we have, we're dependent on getting those folks in place. They are the service providers. And so if we're able to get those in place, then we're able to provide more services, or I should say expanded services beyond what we're currently doing, as well as getting the revenue and generating the revenue that will support. So that's an effort that I know is continuing. And I think every, obviously, everybody in healthcare is having those challenges, but certainly, we're working for solutions.
I would like to add one, one item, and that is that our clinicians in behavioral health see the most challenging of patients with the most complex care needs. We are provider of last resort by matter of law. We, no, so we're not to turn anyone away. We, we recognize that we have challenges because of the fact that we don't have sufficient staff to meet the need of even that very heavy, complex caseload. But it also makes it harder to find, find people that want to do the work because they really have to have a passion for it. It's not like addressing the needs of someone who has deep depression, but they know it's a passing issue and that has a family network that's able to support them. So it, for our community members, I just want to say, we acknowledge the optics of what it looks like to cut behavioral health budget. But it is truly just a recognition of the fact that we are not going to be receiving that outside Medicaid and private payer revenue that would allow us to serve additional people because we don't have the staff to generate the revenue.
Well said. Thank you.
I move to adopt Resolution R 2024-006 in the matter of Supplemental Budget 241101 for Community Health Centers.
Second. All in favor, signify with an I.
I.
I. Thank you. And that concludes our public hearing. We will now move back to our new business. And the next item on the agenda is Item 9.3, Selection Process of Benton County's House Bill of 1519 Rapid Rehousing Notice of Funding Opportunity for Case Management and Street Outreach with April Holland and Rebecca Taylor from Health Services.
Hi again. So I'll kick this off and, and walk us through the item today. And Rebecca is here as our incredible project manager. And she will save me with any questions or anything that I might forget. So Commissioners, as you know, the Coordinated Homeless Response Office has been engaged in developing a flexible housing subsidy pool to coordinate a community-wide system of care to fill gaps and reduce barriers for both clients and service providers. The flexible housing subsidy pool has several components. It includes rental assistance and other supports, including right-fit case management, housing navigation, street outreach. Some individuals and providers may come with services and funding, and others won't. And that's where the flex pool comes in. And this is where we come to the topic of today's discussion, the Notice of Funding Opportunity and where we are today. So the, the Notice of Funding Opportunity covers a couple of elements of the flex pool, case management, and street outreach. The funds from, are sourced from the HB 1519 funds for rapid rehousing, about $1.12 million, if I've got that correct, to rehouse 31 households by next June. The, the totals in the NOFO for case management is up to $360,000. And for street outreach, $80,000. I'll just walk through briefly the, the timeline and some of our activities, as well as, and then jump into kind of where we are now. So we, we met with, after the NOFO was drafted, we met with, the team met with service providers in February and early March. The NOFO opened on March 15th, closed on April 15th. We had a lot of, of help to compile the, the proposals. And our review committee received those applications on April 22nd. The review committee included members from the HOPE Advisory Board, from CSC, as well as non-CRO staff in the Health Department. Did I forget anyone? Is that it? Okay. The review committee got together at the end of April, on the 29th, to, to talk about scoring and to address any questions. And then they all submitted their final scores on May 3rd. In sum, or to get started, I guess, to the, the, none of the, the applications were a full package of all of the, the case management and street outreach supports that would fulfill all of the needs of, of a flexible housing subsidy pool. We had five proposals come back. I missed that part. Five proposals came back, and three of which scored highly. All of them had at least 80% of all available points in the, in the scoring matrix. So since not, no one application fulfill all the needs, we would like to ask your approval to allow us to enter into negotiations to meet the needs of the, the NOFO and the program. And to also ask your approval that the, either the Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Crager here, or his designee, maybe me, make the, the final awards. So that's just getting us started. Rebecca, I know I probably forgot a ton of important things. Feel free to jump in.
Yeah, so one of the, oops. Come on. All right. Okay. So going along with the, the fact that we did receive very, very strong proposals that demonstrated a great understanding of the components of what could be possible in a rapid rehousing program, specifically with our Notice of Funding Opportunity and the flexible housing subsidy pool that we're building, while also including the staffing that we're bringing on, which is a program coordinator and housing navigator. We want the opportunity to negotiate with the top application applicants to see if they are willing to work within a program versus having their own program that they are conducting on their own. And so we included the Notice of Funding Opportunity in the packet we provided you all. And one of the key components that we described in this is that what staff in the county would be doing is essentially playing a matchmaker role to see what types of expertise is presented in the applications received and determine how we can help coordinate and leverage those different resources that we have in our community. Because in this case, it's, it's not a lot of funding we receive for this one-time initiation of this program. We're anticipating additional funding. However, for this initial launch, we really want to try to work from economies of scale here versus having three different self-operating rapid rehousing programs in our community. We're hoping that we can leverage different service components from each of the organizations. And so really, that was what we were hoping to advertise in the Notice of Funding Opportunity. We understand this is sort of a new culture around this work, especially with the idea of creating a system where there's multiple different service organizations providing a component of what an individual person might need. And so we really think that there's an opportunity to sit down with the applicants. And really, the intent of coming to you today is making sure that this process is very transparent, as it is very new. And so as a collective community learning together how to achieve this program, this is, this is sort of us presenting to you the strategy as well, and also permission to move forward.
I'm a fan of trying new strategies and then, you know, tweaking and seeing what works. So that sounds great to me.
Yeah, I, I concur. I think that, again, I'm going to draw a parallel to the new deflection program. We have many of the components, but we just need to put together a system that works better for the individuals that are struggling with houselessness. And so I applaud you for trying to put together that system so that really, there is no wrong door. And we don't have to have people running around from one agency to the next, to the next, in order to find that rapid rehousing.
I guess at some point, I, I would appreciate a picture of how, how the pieces fit together. I'm getting a little confused here. I mean, it seems like a lot of pieces and new initiatives. And so, which is great, but at some point, how, how do the pieces fit together? And we have incredible Rebecca here, so we can, I think we're headed in the right direction. But I think it'd be helpful to have some kind of chart of the various pieces and how they intersect and one-time funding, ongoing funding. So, but it's all good.
Thanks for that feedback. We do have various iterations of infographics and flow charts. I think we're getting really much closer to having something that's ready for, for primetime, but we'd be happy to send you all some draft pieces.
I was going to say, draft is okay. Work in progress. Thank you.
I'm ready.
Oh, I'm ready. I move to authorize the Assistant County Administrator or their delegate to enter into negotiations with select applicants of the House Bill 1519 Rapid Rehousing Notice of Funding Opportunity.
Second. All in favor, please indicate with an I.
I.
I. Yay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is another supplemental budget presentation with Debbie Sessions and Jen Ambul from Financial Services. And this is going to be supplemental budget number 241201. And we will learn more about that now. So proceed.
Okay. Hello again. How is everybody hanging in there?
About the same.
Oh, good, good. So I, in an effort for some consistency, I used the same formatting that Rick used in the previous supplemental. So you will see a lot of the same kinds of things. It is just this supplemental, since we had separated the Health Center, because that was a much larger project and reshoot of their entire budget. This is the rest of the county's supplemental changes. So this first slide shows you what we had originally adopted, what the supplemental changes included, and what the adjusted will look like. The majority of this has to do with the change in capital outlay and contingency. And so with the capital outlay, we'll get into the next page, but as most of you already know, has to do with the purchase of the building and things like that. The contingency has to do with additional funding we have received. And so without the intention of necessarily spending it in this current biennium, so it's been put into contingency. And then the, this slide shows what the result for each of the funds that have been touched in this supplemental. Eleven different funds have been touched with this supplemental, all for various different reasons. So I will come back to the idea of the Health Center supplemental plays, is integrated with this one. When we did the reshoot, some of that behavioral health that we were talking about moved from the Health Center into the General Fund, but for behavioral health. So it's still for those services, but on the public health side and/or crisis, as opposed to the Health Center side. This, oh, go ahead.
Can you go back? Because there's some big numbers here.
Okay.
Maybe start at the top, general, 3.7 million. Is that? Does that connect to a specific project?
So the next page actually kind of gives that breakdown for those different funds. So yes, it does. It has to do, the, the general fund primarily has to do with that behavioral health shift. And that we had considerably, and this is a great thing, considerably higher beginning balances than we had anticipated. And so those were put into contingency. And then the second point was the actual part of the reshoot, the one point, almost nine million switched from behavioral health in the CHC to behavioral health in the general fund. Oh, sorry. Other way. Sorry. The Building Development Fund, the $5 million there is the purchase of 4185. So we increased the revenue and the capital outlay. The 2.5 million in the special grant fund is for what you just heard about, the rapid rehousing funding that has come to us. And so it also is an increase so that we can spend it. It did not go into contingency. In, so the million dollar decrease in the Health Administration Fund is regarding allocated costs and revenue, again, from that CHC budget. So what we had done as part of it is they have a departmental cost allocation. We removed some of that revenue as part of the reshoot to reduce some expenses. So the Health Administration Fund has a million dollars of reduced cost. And two, I'll say smaller, but not necessarily that small, the Employee Trust Fund, there was very much just an administrative duplication of the expenditure in there. And so we've removed that duplication. And then the other trust, the General Trust Fund was reduced because the Animal Defense Program is no longer funded. So we reduced that.
It's no longer funded in Benton County, but it's, the state has taken it back and is funding it at the state level. Yes.
And then the following page, which on here is a little bit difficult to read, but in your packet, I think should be a little easier, is following, again, the same format that shows the progression that we've had for the last couple of biennia and then what has happened in the current biennium's budget. And with that, I will take any questions. And as usual, Jen is the one who did all of the work. I am the one just saying the words. So I am very grateful for all of her work.
Any questions? Okay. Then again, there is a motion associated with this supplemental budget to move the, to forward the supplemental budget to the June 4, 2024 Board Meeting for Public Hearing and Adoption.
I'll move to forward supplemental budget 241201 to the June 4, 2024 Board Meeting for Public Hearing and Adoption.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We'll see you back here on June 4.
Yep. We'll have to coordinate outfits again, Jen.
That makes sense. So next up, we are going to actually recess for a short time, and then we will return for our 45-minute Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee Report Presentation. And what, 15-minute recess? Yeah, 20? This is basically an early lunch break, given that we have not only the Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee, but we have a couple of service districts and executive session upcoming. So we will take a break until noon.
Our board meeting for May 21st and we are picking up with item 9.5, the Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee, and I'd like to invite Jesse Ott and Chris Westfall up to the table. And I note that Jill Van Buren is not with you today.
Yes, unfortunately, our vice chair Jill had a family emergency and she wasn't able to join us, unfortunately.
That is unfortunate. I know she's been very involved in this process.
Agreed. Okay. Well, good morning. Good afternoon, commissioners. So this is a big day for the Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee. Since late 2021, this committee's been hard at work to investigate ways to repurpose the historic courthouse. We couldn't do this work alone. We assembled an exemplary group of community volunteers and advisory staff to help us work through this effort. Some of those folks include Peter Benjamin, Kristel Birdwell, Jessica Haugen, Christopher Jacobs, Roz Keeney, Scott McClure, Christina Riekaloo, Bob Richardson, Jill Van Buren, our chair, Chris Westfall, Christie Wood, the CEO, President of the Chamber of Commerce, the OSU Design 387 students and their professor David Jacobs, the Courthouse Preservation Committee, and the advisory staff that helped us through this process, Jason Allen, Cynthia Delatore, Brenda Downham, myself, Paul Walsinger, Inga Williams, and Commissioner Wise as our liaison. So, you know, this has been a really heartfelt effort with this group, and we've met a lot and we put a lot of real effort into this process to make sure that we came back to you with a recommendation that would give you plenty of food for thought as we move forward to repurpose the historic courthouse. So I'd like to turn it over to our chair, Chris Westfall. Chris has done a fantastic job of leading this group throughout this process and his passion for the courthouse and historic preservation was definitely noted throughout this process.
Thank you, Jesse. And thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the time this afternoon. As Jesse's just mentioned, it's been a clear journey here and we're fortunate to be in the position where we're coming back with a final recommendation and report which you have before you. I really very much appreciate the time and the guidance that you've given us along the way, as well as all of the members of the Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee that Jesse has just listed and the support team. As he mentioned, we have done this and it did take a lot of coordination and cooperation, but it's a hopefully the product is what you're looking for. What I'm prepared to do this afternoon is to read my conveyance letter to you. Jesse suggested that we read that into the record. So if you'll give me a moment, I'll read through this briefly. Dear Board President Commissioners, the Benton Committee is charged to investigate ways to repurpose the historic courthouse and to provide a repurposing recommendation for the board's consideration. The community-based committee includes citizens with expertise in economic development, historic preservation, arts and culture, tourism, and the courthouse's historic use. Benton County staff serve an advisory, non-voting role. Committee met regularly between March 2022 and April of 2024. During that period, the committee diligently explored a wide range of repurposing ideas. It saw input from interested community members prior to deliberating to a consensus on the recommendation for the future potential use of the historic courthouse. Committee is pleased to submit the accompanying recommendation and report, reimagining the Benton County Historic Courthouse for your consideration. In offering this recommendation, the committee respects that they are advisory in nature. We recognize that the work of the committee was but a beginning foray into a deeper and richer conversation that Benton County will undertake with the community. We are optimistic that the report will prove to be useful guidance for the board as you seek to determine a specific and best use of this historic, important, and iconic building. We thank the Benton County Administration and the advisory staff for their expertise and gracious support. Additionally, the committee is most grateful for the meaningful input shared by so many interested members of the public. Input that was crucial consideration in the final analysis. Of particular note, the committee greatly appreciated the collaborative engagement with Oregon State University via the partnership with the College of Business's Interior Design 387 students and instructor. There's our hope that the mutually enriching outcomes accrued by working together with OSU on this project will offer the county a successful model for future collaborations across a wide range of areas of expertise residing within the OSU faculty and student body. Committee thanks you for the opportunity to have served you in this manner. We anticipate this middle of this report represents the conclusion of the purpose of our charge. That's by way of saying, we believe we've done what you've asked us to do. We have concluded this process. Along the way, what I've provided you are some inputs. I want to give just a few remarks about how we've come to where we are now before getting into specific recommendation. Through this process, I was reminded of Theseus' ship. And for those who know of Theseus' ship, it was a ship that Theseus used to come back from Crete after slaying the Minotaur. And the ship was dry docked in town, in the center of town, and then every year was taken out and repurposed for the return trip back. That's a very condensed version of it, but the part that I think I want to emphasize here is that over years and years and years, that ship was reconstructed one plank at a time as something wore out, deteriorated, needed to be replaced. It was replaced with newer and better material and it became still Theseus' ship. And so the question that we were posed is, is it still Theseus' ship? Do we still have the historic courthouse? This courthouse has been around for quite a while, over 130 years. And in that time, it's been a courthouse, has not been anything other than a courthouse. There's been other ancillary uses being occupied, but it has always served as the courthouse. It's in pieces of it have been replaced, physical parts of it, parts of the building have been remodeled, some of it extensively, including adding a second and a third, I mean, a third and a fourth floor. But it hasn't ever had a different use. And what we're looking at now is not only are we talking about a physical repurposing of the building and is it still the same ship, is it still the same building, but we're talking about launching into potentially a remarkably different use of the building. So in multiple layers, I was reflecting on this as we're thinking about how to provide the report. This is a turning point in the history of this building. The committee is very much invested in the thought of preserving the building and it having a use and having specifically, as Scott McClure mentioned, one of our committee members, a job. And that kind of became our mantra is what job would this building have if it is going to survive another 130 years and be replaced bit by bit and maintained as it goes along over time, the way that it has been so far? Part of what we considered is that we think it's been so well taken care of because it has this specific job. So when we looked at our recommendation, and if you recall, the guidance we were provided is anything is possible except for demolition. So the universe was pretty large to begin with, to narrow it down. And having come down to two specific areas of the recommendation, what I would ask you to consider is when we came to the point of coming to our consensus, we had gone to the public with two options, one of them government civic, maintain some type of a government civic use, having a job. The other thing that we'd looked at at that point, we'd narrowed it down to arts, education, and culture. There's some competing interest out there in community for limited dollars around nonprofit things, but there's also opportunities for collaboration. So the committee was looking at this as there is a niche here that the courthouse could potentially serve in that capacity. Played rightly and with thoughtfulness. So we felt those two could be what we actually then, after we participated with some public feedback, what we looked at then is either of those, either arts, education, and culture, government civic, a combination of both of those. So we didn't see either way to say, let's split the baby in this regard. We looked at it and identified our recommendation to you would be to either arts, education, and culture, government civic, or a combination of both. We hope that you'll find some particular use in the future regarding some area around that. I know that Jesse's looking forward to taking over from where we've done our work to this point and see if we can help position that. I do want to call attention though, before getting into questions, one of the things that I mentioned in the letter is about the OSU coordination. When I was here before you last, we talked briefly about partnering with OSU. The idea was laid and we had Bob Richardson with the OSU Planning Department who came forward and said he could make some connections and he did with David Jacobs. David teaches the 387, which is a junior level cohort class for advanced design. We partnered with them for the entire fall term of 2023. And this is the product that they focused on exclusively. They did original work. Now, what I would say as caveat is we didn't give them any specific guidelines other than you don't have to worry about money. Just design something as though cost was no object here and come up with some proposals around some of the things that we had already considered. So what we have here, and ideally these will be incorporated into an appendix to the report that we've submitted. It's just too large of a data file right now to say electronically, but we have the boards physically. And there are examples of the work that groups formed out of individuals who had originally drafted some conceptual ideas and then came up with a floor by floor, each individual of the group taking on a specific floor with a concept. So there's a wide range of these things. We aren't suggesting that these are plug and play kind of things that you can just move right into. What it did, it did provide a raw sense of what it is that the building could lend itself to. We thought that was appropriate. Don't be happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Well, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this and really appreciate DLR and trying to pin down the inventory, what's, what do we have, where are the potential gaps? And I think that'll serve us well going forward. Otherwise, it's, everybody has a some notion of what's, what's out there, but to have a complete survey, I think will serve us well. And I appreciated, I think towards the end of the information in the packet was several examples around the country of other courthouses that have been repurposed. I remember seeing a presentation from DLR several years ago and I knew that was that study was out there, but it was helpful. It's comforting to know we're not the first ones to get to wrestle with this serious change in function. A building has a particular design and now, oh, let's do something completely different. And that will definitely be a challenge going forward, but I really appreciate all the meetings and the effort and I think it's great connecting with OSU and getting their expertise and free labor to help us along. And we need partners, whether it's City of Corvallis or OSU or what's appropriate and who's interested and it's gonna be a fun couple of years here to try to answer some of these questions.
I was just gonna thank the committee and you, all of you for the work. I know that it got extended quite a bit and became more of an undertaking that I think most of the committee members were aware of when they originally signed up. So I really appreciate the dedication of everyone to stay on the ship and just get the job done.
Wanted to speak to the fact that I like the idea of the blend of government and civic uses with potentially some arts and cultural elements. And I like the, the direction of program usage that you're thinking about in terms of specialty courts and restorative justice programs, alternative dispute resolution programs that really welcome in broader swath of community members and not just people that are very typically kind of justice involved. Really a community space. That's a great goal. My biggest concern and looking forward is thinking about where, where the investment comes from because any one of these visions is going to take significant financial investment. And I would love to see a public-private partnership emerge. So I don't know how one goes about soliciting for that kind of partner, but I'm sure there are ways. And we can take a look at some of those other jurisdictions that have walked this path before us and get some advice about how one would look for that kind of partnership. But I want to also thank the committee for the work that they've done. It's not, you know, it's never completed until we have a new slate of work for the courthouse, right? But thank the committee for this phase and I'm looking forward to the evolution of the work as it moves into ideally the courthouse preservation committee's purview and a broader public process for engagement.
Wonderful. Thank you. And on that commissioner, so at this point now, we're starting to pursue the National Park Grants. So that's a really good source and they are that resource that knows how to do this and have had successful projects in the past. So we're working through CFM to, you know, pursue those National Park Grants as well as the state parks grants for further outreach and further scoping of what's possible for us. And I'd also like to quickly add that I'd like to invite everyone on May 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. That's the Historic Preservation Celebration and we'll be recognizing the Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee there at the La Salle Center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Thank you. I think that both Commissioner Wise and I will be attending that event. Commissioner Malone will be at another event, looking at floodplain map revision out in his neck of the woods in King's Alley. So, but it's exciting to see this work move forward and recognized by the broader community. As everyone has said, this is such an icon for the community at large and for the city that we have to do it right. So I'm looking forward to those next steps. And I don't have any further questions at this time.
I do. I mentioned DLR earlier and their study of other courthouses around the country that have been repurposed. They do enough of an in-depth study to go into how some of the financial aspects were handled as far as remodeling. Got kind of the initial changing the configuration and upgrading some systems before anybody move in and then and there's the ongoing operating cost, but I guess I'm especially concerned about the initial upgrading.
Sure. So Commissioner Malone, the DLR study from 2021, the feasibility study took a look into that. It's a glimpse. It's one of the appendix to this packet. It's probably going to need to be refreshed, of course. One of the considerations that the committee looked at was if you maintain a government civic building, I'm not trying to give advice, but if it's maintained within that same use and occupancy type, there's a lower threshold for what would have to be done to repurpose the building in terms of upgrading. If you move into some other use and occupancy type, it would require, it would trigger potentially over threshold requirements to upgrade to certain. But overall, and it's included in this report and recommendation, the committee did feel compelled to make the recommendation that regardless of what use the building be put to in the future, that that if you can find a way to seismically stabilize it, that would be advisable by the committee's perspective, just for any future occupants. But that study did find, the DLR study did find good alignment with our outcome, our recommendation does align with some of that guidance in the DLR feasibility study in which it spoke to a need, identified need for small and medium scale performing areas, performing arts areas. So there's some larger venues in the community, not as many larger. But also for community meeting spaces, it did note that the Benton County Corvallis Library is the only public meeting space in Corvallis is open as a public meeting space. It's having some space capacity like some that could be available in a courthouse. We're certainly part of our conversation. Arts, education, culture, I believe they also identified some of these niche areas that we've considered all kinds of things, some of which are examples in our charts that could be included in there. But as Commissioner Ezro just mentioned, having this be a community space, a public building was part of what we were trying to look at. One of the conversations that came up that I think was empowering to the sense of supporting arts education and culture was having this third space, space outside of the home you're not necessarily paying to go to as a consumer, a space to have a public sense of community.
Yeah, a lot of that, when we broke into the arts, culture, and education subgroup, we dove a little deeper into how some of these other projects got off the ground. And a lot of it came through that initial public outreach, just letting folks know, you know, the entrepreneurs in our area can start dreaming and start collaborating with us. So a lot of it emerged kind of organically out of a public outreach to say that, you know, we're trying to repurpose this old high school, government building, mill, you name it. And a lot of those projects, that's how that got started, was just through the kind of the general public information campaign about the site and then that triggered kind of the next step.
Sounds like at some point, an open house would be in order to get more people to see the inside of the building, not just see it as they're driving by.
Yeah, we would love that and we have plenty of, plenty of folks that would help us pull that off for sure.
It does sound like a good idea. I know I think about, we don't have a lot of developers in this community. It's not it's not the kind of community that some of these other places have been redeveloped in, in terms of the financial resources, as far as I can tell. And what I, part of what I was wondering is in terms of mechanics, have some of these other communities actually put forth a request for proposals or any kind of call for yeah, call for partnership. I don't even know what one calls that, but I'm sure it exists out there in the contracts world to try to recruit a partner to think through this with us. That's, that would be exciting as a next step. That's, that would be exciting as a next step.
And it did, Commissioner, that did happen in some of these. So on pages 316 to 317 of the packet, we've included a list of some of the case studies that the committee looked at. They're not part of the DLR study, DLR did a handful as well. We looked at additional ones, and some of those did what you were just suggesting as a call for concepts or a call for proposal for concepts where people could open to, you know, within some boundaries, make proposals that had not been thought of necessarily. That's really how this came about with OSU's class. You know, there are things that they presented to us, and I was really struck by the professionalism, by the high caliber of the presentations and the materials that they presented to us. But they gave us a lot of original ideas, too, and hopefully you'll have a chance to look through these. We do have them all in physical form, so I can leave them here with Jesse, and you guys can look through those later and hopefully get electronic version of them. There's some ideas in there that I'm very certain no one in our committee would have come up with, that we all thought, wow, that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to look through them all on the website, and they were a lot of fun to go through. I would agree.
But I think you would get this similar response aligned with what you're looking for if you put the call out to the community or to the broader region.
Yeah, and I think part of what intrigues me about going out in that way for kind of a call for concepts is thinking about, not someone just with ideas, but with potential view for revenue and long-term management. Because as a county, I can't see us becoming an arts and culture space management. It is not part of our core business, but as an ancillary part or a secondary component, absolutely. So I think we just really need a strong partnership, and that's what I hope that we can find.
I move to accept the final report of the Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee.
Second.
All those in favor signify with an aye. Aye, aye, thank you. And as I mentioned before, I'm also looking forward to that partnership with the Courthouse Preservation Committee moving forward. See what kind of good trouble we can stir up. Okay, with that, we've come to the end of our regular agenda. I am, the next item on the agenda is announcements. Are there any further announcements?
Just again, don't forget to vote, 8:00 p.m., by 8:00 p.m. tonight.
Yes, please vote. We will then stand in recess, and we are going to pick up our special service district, county service district meetings. And then, once we conclude those meetings, we will return to the Board of Commissioners meeting and up with the executive session. So the service district should be short and sweet, so we will get to the executive session shortly. Okay, I will now gavel us in as the 911 Emergency Telecommunications Services County Service District Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Next item of business is the consent calendar, which contains minutes from June 2023 and January 2nd, 2024. Do you hear a motion approved?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 I just realized, where is this information, where are these packets? Were they emailed to us? Because I don't see them in the calendar.
They, they are on the calendar, they were below the regular packet, so they were, the agenda and the service district meeting packets were below that.
I see it now, thank you for that. Sorry, please continue.
Okay, moving on to new business, we have a presentation from Debbie Sessions regarding the supplemental budget for the 911 Emergency Telecommunications Services County Service District.
The, the request is to increase the budget by about $424,000. This is a result of increased collections on delinquent taxes and actually a refund of a duplicative space charge. So if you remember, we've got the 911 Service District, and then we also have space charge for the City of Corvallis Law Enforcement Building portion. They were duplicated, and so we have this supplemental to address the refund to them. So that is what the $424,000 represents.
Any questions? Okay. We're ready for a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number R 2024-005 in the matter of Supplemental Budget 241202.
Second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Is there any other business before the 911 County Service District Governing Board? Nope, hearing none, we're adjourned. Next, we will move into the Cascade View Service District Governing Board meeting for Tuesday, May 21st. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move to adoption of the consent calendar, again containing minutes from June 2023 and January 2nd, 2024.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll turn with new business to Debbie Sessions for presentation of the supplemental budget for the Cascade View County Service District.
This is a request to move $20,000 out of contingency and into capital outlay for a water pump that broke. So they are replacing it and need to use their contingency.
Are there any further questions on this topic? Hearing none, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to forward supplemental.
Oh, yep, there's two, one's for today forwarding, and then the next one's for June 4th.
Okay, I move to forward supplemental budget 241203 to the June 4th, 2024 meeting for public hearing and adoption.
Second.
All in favor indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other business before Cascade View County Service District?
No, ma'am.
Hearing none, that meeting is adjourned. I do have a question, however. Under the 911 County Service District, we did not refer to a public hearing. Does that one also need to be referred for a public hearing on June 4th?
Yes.
I will reopen, I will reopen the meeting for the 911 Emergency Telecommunications Services County Service District at this time in order to revise our action.
You let me make the motion, and I just mess it all up. Let's see. Is it also going to be on June 4th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so let's see. I move to forward supplemental budget to the June 4th, 2024 meeting for public hearing and adoption.
Second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
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 And now I think we need a motion to rescind the first motion approving the resolution 2024-03.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of rescinding the motion to adopt the resolution, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, and now we will gavel out of the 911 County Service District meeting once again. And with that, we will return to our regular board meeting. And at this time, we will meet under ORS 192.6602D for labor negotiations and ORS 192.6602E for real estate.